Before we take a little break, you guys will get started, you think?
Yeah.
Get started.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get started.
Okay. Yep, I'll give you the overview, and if you have any questions, you can fire away. As I was stating a minute ago, do you have to say something?
Yeah, no, no, I was just, I was gonna say, because we're just a hair behind. If you, if you don't mind, I'd appreciate if you try not to get long-winded.
Absolutely.
If you don't mind, I don't want, you know, I want to respect what you're doing, and we respect everything.
Absolutely.
Okay, I thank you.
Yep, the big picture here is all of the airport revenues pay for everything that we want to do. In addition to that, this year, we have $239,000 of grant money that's coming in, it's literally already sitting there, all we have to do is draw down on it. That $239,000 is going to pay for these capital improvements that I have requested in my budget. So, we have in there a new truck, a new, two new utility vehicles, 20-foot mower, and putting ADA compliant doors on the terminal, that's all covered under the grant money. That literally is already sitting there, we just have to draw down on it. So, with that being said, we're also, usually we get $150,000 a year guaranteed money from the FAA. That last infrastructure bill, it's $763,000 a year for the next five years. So, that's guaranteed money that's come, that's in addition to requesting 1.8 million from the FAA to do our design grant for this year's project. So, the big, the big takeaway is, everything that I have proposed is paid for, and, and the highlighted point that I put in my narrative is, we're also keeping almost $600,000 in reserves. So, we're paying for these things and putting, keeping $600,000 on the side for some things that may pop up. So, that is the high level of the airport budget.
There. I see Chip candidate, you, several months ago, you gave him a, bumped him up to a new position.
He promoted him, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I know Chip very well, and I know his wife very well, she used to work with me for years.
Okay.
And very good people, and I'm really glad that he's hung in there.
Yes.
You know, because he, he, he's, I mean, he's top-notch guy.
He really is. I've known Chip my whole life as well, and I'm very happy that we were able to promote him from within. I mean, he, he's a, he's the type of employee that we want to retain. He's been, he's been loyal, he's learned the airport, and, and he's, he's a huge asset, so.
So, how you making out with, how many employees do you have over there?
So, six of us total.
Six of us, and, and you're doing well with everybody?
We are, I mean, we have a lot of work to do. Basically, it's three of us on the admin side, and Chip, and Chip has an opening right now, so it's only two on the maintenance side. So, we stay extremely busy, but, but we, we kind of like that, because we have a small, nimble team, we're able to get a lot done, and basically, it's the six of us taking care of everything at that airport.
So, so, so Scott is good, Scott Wagner is bringing a lot to the airport. So, do you, do you, do you see, I mean, what he's bringing is, is the jets and all that kind of stuff, and so, do you, do you see that the airport growing in, in, in that way that we, does that, does that mess with our employees, so to speak?
So, we're going to continue to grow, it's not going to be out, you know, out of hand or anything like that.
Right, I was curious.
But, yes, we will need to add employees, probably say over the next 10 years. I'll give you a good example. In the last two years, we have created more than 20 more acres of mowable airfield by taking the trees off the business center.
I see.
So, we got 20 more acres to maintain, and then, once that new, once the new airfield configuration is in, you know, we're going to be mowing from airport to Glebe Road. So, yeah, we'll need another maintenance person to do stuff like that. In addition, something I always like to remind council, Joe Marsh and Mike Henry did a lot of building of hangars, and those hangar deals are always for 30 years, and they revert back to county ownership, and so, over the next 20 years, the, the amount of hangars that we own and responsible for repairing is increasing. Like, as last year, or in 2020, the old Spitfire hangar, you know, that Mr. Blair's, he owned it, well, that's now ours. So, along with that comes the roof and things of that nature, we take care of state police. So, so we're going to be, be caring for more hangars over the next 20 years, so there'd be more money in that type of stuff, so. Absolutely, growth will mean a couple more employees.
No questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah.
Good job, great, I really appreciate you coming down for the family.
Absolutely, it's my pleasure. Yep, thank you all.
All right, so.
I'm going to bring a bunch of board of directors to our county retreat.
Okay. Well, we'll show it all then, we'll, we'll roll out the red carpet.
Sounds good.
Thanks, guys. Okay, thank you. Then you could ask something better than that, right?
That looks election board.
Oh, just a minute.
That's cool that Chip's really fit, made a career out of it, that's awesome.
End it now, end it. See, how it worked for me, man gives.
Oh, right. Oh, she said they were writing something, right?
Yeah, we are. Yeah. Come on, come on, Dale, off here, you never gonna get away with not coming up here. Yeah. Man, he got, he got, he got reserves, anybody, he got reserves. He got money. We got money.
He's got a, he's got a sort of tag on him.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, yeah, it is. Well, welcome, everybody.
Hi, how are you doing? Good, how are you all?
Good, good. Appreciate you being here. You're, you're running just a, just a hair, just a hair lead.
Okay, that's not, that's no problem, that's not bad.
It's only a hair.
Yeah. It's just a.
Okay, then you can jump right in if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you want me to start off? Okay, well, what I did is, I went through the budget that we had from last year and where we were this year, and for the estimate, I tried to estimate it as close to where I thought we would finish out FY '22, and then, I came today just to highlight the reasons why there were increases in some lines. And I'll start right with the salaries, if you look at the FY '23 requests for salaries, this is solely due to January '23, there was, if you look at the budget estimate, there was an increase in salary there. So, the estimate for 2023 of January, there is a proposed budget increase in July of 22 of 3% and January of '23 for 2%. And when we, when I added up all of the salaries of where we are now to include this year's salaries, that's where we came. So, that's nothing that I put in, it's just raises that were given by the government. So, we're scheduled to get a raise in July, and we're scheduled to get a raise in January, and that's the total that it'll be. So, I, we have no control of that. If you go down to election 5005, I went back and estimated where I thought we would end up this year for FY '22. So, you see there is a difference between the salary of, the budget salary of $11,000 to the estimate of 42. When I went to the budget, we're currently at approximately 19,289 that we paid out already. So, we're going to end up going over in that line this year, and I estimated it to be 42,59, which comes up with my request of 96,180. It's 42,59 plus additional money for one more person to get us through the election.
Is that additional person requirement by the state, or is it just something that you would like to have? Because we have certain requirements, we have to have three people, I think, right?
Yes, this is, what we're doing right now is, well, did you want to say something, Mr. Joe?
Well, it's, it's a part-time, and it's, it's primarily on account of the change in absentee ballots being sent out. They just received a application for absentee, we've already got like 2,000 back already, and normally, in a regular election year, we have less than 500. And we've only got 2,000 so far, and it's hard to tell how many we're going to get. They're coming in pretty regularly.
Uh-huh, yeah, we, we. We have currently processed vote-by-mail applications manually, 1,869, and if you include online, it's 2,099, and that was a change in law. This year is the first year that they mailed, other than the pandemic, we had no other choice, but the law is then that they were to mail out, mail-in ballot applications to all voters, and we are getting those in, so that has increased our workload. So, the volume of the workload has increased, and we're, we are also having a personnel issue in the office, so that makes the workflow, we need a person to not interrupt our workflow, to keep it going so that we can get through the election.
Changes, right, because, you know, people are now starting to get more comfortable when the virus has gone down, and they changed their mind, they want to vote in person, will all of those, because you won't necessarily know if that ballot has come back yet. So, anybody that goes in person to vote after going through the application process to vote by mail, will all of those be provisional?
You have a certain time period that you can change that, so right now, before our ballots are actually produced, if someone says, hey, I got this mail-in ballot application in the mail, I filled it out, and I said that I wanted to be, get a ballot by mail, and I've changed my mind, as long as those ballots have not been produced, we can take it out of the system.
So, that's just something, I mean, it's not necessarily related to the budget, other than it'd be less printing possibly for you, we're going to need to get that out publicly, put something out there saying you have until X date if you've changed your mind, and.
We don't normally, we wouldn't do that.
Well, or we need to make the announcement in the county council meeting so that people are aware, so that if they like to not, if they prefer to go in person, so that it doesn't get stuck in a provisional sense, that they need to take back their application.
Will it be turned away at poll?
If someone brings their ballot into the poll that they filled out, we will take the ballot and process it by canvas, so.
If they don't bring it in, if they mailed it.
If they mailed it in, if they mailed it in and they come to the poll and they already have a mail-in, then it would vote provisional.
What if they had mailed it in, that's my question, if they, if they.
If they had not mailed it in and they come to the poll, then we would encourage them to go home and get the ballot and fill it out, and we would take it. So, we wouldn't encourage provisional, we would encourage them to.
I'm here to vote.
We would know.
You would.
Because there's some, they're flagged in the poll book. So, if someone comes in and they received a mail-in ballot, they're flagged in the poll book, so that.
I can see that, I can definitely see this happening, though, people are like, oh, I'm comfortable going out now, I never mailed in my ballot, and then they're going to have issues, not issues, but they're going to have questions when they get.
I mean, we'll get some questions as, as it gets closer to the election, and we will tell them the same thing. So, as of right now, we've only had two, but generally, if people, like, going in a pandemic year, most people that do the mail-in ballot request do follow through and continue. We didn't have major issues with people wanting to change their minds, so.
They may, I'm just saying, we need to be a little bit proactive in getting information out to the public.
Haven't, I do definitely remember Jerry saying.
Yeah.
That we had people coming and voting twice, and it wasn't their fault because times were confusing.
During the pandemic, it may have been.
During a county council meeting, she announced that people voted multiple times because it was confusing.
It shouldn't have been a lot, generally, if someone comes in the polling place and they have a mail-in ballot, the judges will know. So, that will alarm an, an election judge, a check-in judge to say, hey, this person has a flag on their name. And then, a chief judge will come over and, of course, talk to them and let them know. So, is, you wouldn't get a lot of voters voting twice. It wasn't, we didn't have a major thing about it, but we had a few that tried, but we generally caught them at check-in. So, what happens is, you would get a lot of people doing provisional, as she was saying. So, because of the fact that you will get some people that will come into the polling place and say, hey, I want to vote, I changed my mind, and this is what I want to do, and if they say that, we have to allow them to vote provisional. So, you will see an increase in provisional, and what would happen is, we would canvass those ballots the same way, we, this is basically the same thing that you would do with a mail-in ballot, it would be canvassed and processed during our, with the DS 200. So, depending on who your chief, chief judges are, if they explain them the process, the, it's not a different ballot, it's the same process as you would the mail-in ballot, someone else is going to stick your ballot through the machine, and it'll be a bipartisan team doing it. So, some people change their mind once they know that, but I do agree, as we get closer to the election, if there are some people that are not aware of it, then we will put out a message and let people know.
I'm sorry, one more real quick.
Sure.
When I'm looking at the postage expense for fiscal year 2020, would that be the, the expense that you incurred during the 2020 election?
Postage expense for 2020, repeat what you said again?
So, that, would that have been the, the calls during the 2020 election year cycle, or would that cost of calling earlier?
Wouldn't that end June 30th, Frank?
That would have been the primary calls, the general calls would have been under FY '21, because of being in November.
Okay, because your, your mail is, the postage is down about 5,000 less.
You mean for this year?
Yeah.
Because as of right now, we haven't had anything, so it's less because it's a non-election year.
Okay, so then, okay.
So, we'll get more, we'll get the call, they will increase because of the June 28th, so anything that we turn in, whenever the budget, our final time determining that money, will end up increasing that line. So, we should get very close to what was predicted in the budget.
Yeah, thank you.
Hopefully, it'll be in this calendar year, there's a court that could delay the election, because there's two cases in court about it. And they've, they've already delayed the filing deadline.
Yes.
It's not over yet.
So, what's the word on the street, are they going to delay the primary?
Well, you're getting some that, that want it delayed, and you're getting some that don't want it delayed, so as of right now, we don't know, but without changing anything else, looking at our calendar, they can delay it at least through July without affecting anything else, but as of right now, we, we have no word on anything. And they've also asked for vote centers as well, so we don't know anything as of right now. But as soon as I get an update, we will send that to you and let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Upper Shore Aging.
Yep.
And one other thing I want to point out, if you look at election line 5455, there's a significant increase there also, and that is due to the proposed budget of poll books. And I think we came before you last year and told you that, and they decided to put that off, but there is a significant increase there as well that I do want to make note of.
But that is the split with the state, we worked hard on that with NACO last year, make sure that stays 50-50, and that's.
It is.
That is what's in your line, I think, the 50% cost share rate.
Yes, that's the estimate, so the estimate that they gave us is our share, our proposed share without the poll books would be 170,684. If we do the poll books, that the other 27,460 would be a finance. It's a proposal, so the Board of Public Works could deny it, you know, so it's proposed right now. But they are planning to do that, and we had to include it in our budget for this year. So, that does include the 50-50 split price as well.
Appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yep, good job. Yep.
Hello.
Good afternoon, folks. My name is Bill Schuberg, and I'm president of the Board of Upper Shore Aging. Before we actually get started, so now, what I do ask, I just want to make sure everyone has heard the organizational announcement, that after 39 years of service to Upper Shore Aging, Gary is going to be leaving us and going to become the executive director of Upper Shore Aging Housing Corporation, and we certainly thank him for all his dedication to serving seniors in the counties we serve, and that's not changing, because now he's going to be serving them in a different way by providing affordable housing.
Congratulations, Gary, we really appreciate it, it's been a pleasure working with you for me for eight years.
Been talking.
County, yeah. I started out as a young person, and now I'm a senior citizen.
I have a handout, is that okay for, to talk about, our supplemental budget particularly? And Gary will handle the details on the show. Again, I'll just start out, and Charlie's going to talk about bus passes, but the first item on that first page there is a three-year comparison of our budgets from all sources. The county appropriation, as you will see, was $478,984 last year. This year, we're asking for 562,284, and those components of the supplemental budget is what I'll really talk, be talking about for a minute, but I also wanted to point.
Why did the federal go down so much?
Why?
Why did the federal go down so much?
That was CARES money. In fiscal year, there was significant CARES money that was distributed.
In '21 and '22?
In, '21 was the first allocation of CARES, and in '22.
So, I would have loved to have seen on here, and maybe you can get it to us later, is '20, so we can compare a real year with a real year.
We can hopefully provide it.
Thank you.
We're, well, just give you a feel for where the money is coming from, that we're investing in seniors in Talbot County, and in the next fiscal year, we projected it'll be $1.3 million from all sources. The next page really breaks down the three components of the supplemental budget we're asking for. The first is the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. This is a program that we initiated starting last year with a grant from a Mark Corps. This is a way of putting 55 and older volunteers together with recent, organizations that need volunteer help. Certainly, we do in our Wheels and Wheels, but it's also any other county organization that is providing services in the county that can use volunteer services. So, this becomes a focal coordination point for that to happen. Launched the program last year, Doris.
Mason.
Mason is our person here in Talbot County running it. For this next fiscal year, we can get another 100, another 75,000, but we need a 20% match from the county, which is $15,000. So, that's one piece of it. We're also, we're asking for staff salary treatment in the form of $18,250. That will allow us to get all of our people, all of our staff people, at least a $15 an hour, I think is critical, and it's really critical to us being able to attract and retain good people, the kind of people we need. So, we think it's very important when we get that.
Typically, though, we try to, even department or agency, we don't do more than what we're going to do for our kind of staff, so I guess, you know, keep that in proper perspective, just in a sense of fairness to everybody.
Okay, the third component is a new staffing plan for Upper Shore Aging, and it's really driven by the fact that for at least the 10, last 10 years, our business has been growing, and there's no other way than the fact that the senior population in the county is growing, in all the counties we serve, but in the county, but also in the services we provide. And typically, the Department of Aging provides programmatic funding for us that covers the cost of, the delivery of programs, but not managing the people that deliver the programs. So, over time, we've gotten ourselves into a position where Gary, now leaving, is leaving probably a good situation where he has 16 direct reports right now, and there's no way he could effectively manage and coach 16 folks. So, this new staffing plan puts in place the resources to manage the organization now and into the future. There, there's actually an word chart on the back, just to give you a feel for what it will look like, where we're putting in place a community services director to oversee all services that are delivered in the community, like senior care and, and supports planning and that sort of thing. And we're also going to put in place an operations director to handle information services and some of the other functions that we don't have currently, like community relations and some HR functionality. So, that's kind of an overview of the supplemental request.
The new position for the operations director, would that position take on some of the duties and responsibilities of the deputy director that was in 2013?
Certainly, there are functions in there that would be appropriate for the executive director. But we took a little different approach, and this approach is very similar to what Mac just did in the reorganization as well, which is put directors in to cover particular areas of service, like those community facing services and information facing services. So, would have the title of deputy director.
The functionality would be.
Yeah. One of the challenges we face honestly is, we don't have any really succession planning, can't do it, because we don't have anybody to succeed, so we're left in a situation where we're now out actively seeking a replacement for Gary, and we can't look in-house and find some appropriate resource to fill the position.
Okay. And are you able to, you're able to do this new staffing for only an additional 50,000 because you're leveraging some of the federal and state money with this, or?
Yes, part of it, the, the community services director, we have resources and funding in place that we can fill that position with, and we're actively working to fill it. This funding would maybe mainly to, from the operations director piece.
Questions, council?
Charlie needs to talk about bus passes.
Not really, I just want to thank you all for your continued support, and I'm looking forward to receiving the support again this year. The bus passes still remain in an average of 33 or 34 per month, and I'm sure that by the end of this fiscal year, I will have spent the whole $14,500 that has been provided to us. As you know, a lot of the people that use the passes do not come to the center, there are those that are going to treat, must go into doctor's appointments, shopping, and other places, so they are very vital to the people in this community. I was telling them earlier, I was on a call earlier today, and that one of the issues that came up was transportation, you know, and, and ability of people that need transportation to get to a doctor's appointment, and goes for shopping, especially those with families and things, so it's, I appreciate all the help that you all give, and I appreciate all you've done for the center so far and Upper Shore Aging.
Appreciate all the seniors, yeah. Getting them to the doctors, very key.
It's, it's important.
Like I was talking to you the other day, I, I really hope that we've been having Thanksgiving dinner this, this coming year.
With all the willing, as long as we do not have another virus that comes to light.
It'll be great to get back.
It will be great, and just as an FYI, in May, May is older Americans month, so I'm going to be sending stuff to Susan, so if you walk into a proclamation for both us and Bay 100, and real quick, Bay 100 Senior Center is really on a roll, they've, since they've opened back up, they've enrolled about 70 new people. But in May, May the 13th, we're going to be having, hopefully, an expo, we'll have organizations come in to bring information, and it'll be open to the community, so I will send you all an invitation so that you can come in and look around.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all of you. Thank you.
Congratulations, Derek.
I'm Dr. Paul Rigger, I'm with the Extension Office. I'm an interim director, so I have not been before you folks before, so I came so prepared, it's ridiculous. I, I actually wasn't sure what to expect, so I printed off some copies of our annual report that I just printed today, and then I also brought you copies of the PowerPoint that I would have projected up, but I was told that I can't do PowerPoints, at least while we're doing the, the webcasting. It makes it so they can't see it. Today with me is Shannon Dill, our agriculture educator for the Extension Office, and Tom Hudson, he's our 4H educator for the county, and they're here in case you have any questions. And they're here in case you have any questions for them specifically or questions that I just don't know the answer to, because I've only been in this position since early December?
Yes.
Early December. And I will be finishing my tenure at the end of this month. Well, they'll be having a permanent director starting. So I live up in Cecil County, so I had a little bit of a drive this morning for our 8 o'clock meeting that we had at the office. So I'm not sure if you all are familiar with Extension or what Extension does. If you'd like, I can give you a brief overview of that. If you are aware, we can move right on to numbers, if that's what you'd like.
If you can move right to numbers, I think I'm aware of.
Okay, great, great.
You've done a great job.
I will let your supervisor know.
Please let them know.
All right, well, great. If you would flip to the third page of that document there, the PowerPoint document, you can kind of see a breakdown of our office expenses. There's no cost to the county for the top 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lines. That would include myself and other regional people that cover not only, say, Talbot County, but maybe also Dorchester or Caroline County as well. So you can see that there's no cost to county funds for FY '22 at all, and there wouldn't be any cost to county funds in FY '23 for those line items or for those salary items. There are full-time Talbot County educators, and you can see that in the few positions below. I do want to point out that our master gardener coordinator is .8 FTE, so she's not full-time, but she's close to full-time. And you can see the percentage breakdown of how the county funds or how the county funds are applied to those salary lines. And then we have several part-time positions. You can see some are funded by county, some are funded by grants. And then our other costs would include our travel, the fringe benefits, and office support. You guys cover a lot of the office support, but not a lot of the fringe. So, you know, there are some offsets and things of that. And then I put down the overall coverage percentage for FY '22 between local, state, and federal dollars. And sometimes the federal line items, if you look up at the top, 100% personnel that are federal, you know, do I spend 25% of my time covering in Talbot? So it's, there are assumptions that it would be 25%, and so that's how I calculated those federal numbers as it applies to Talbot County. So they're certainly not exact, but they're very close. So you can see the total office cost is about $600,000. The county, last year, the initial budget request was $194,000. Then there was a supplemental that was passed. This year, our request is $212,000 and some change. I don't have that number in front of me. Thank you. And that is entirely due to the state COLA and merit increase that happened in January of '22, and then the one that's anticipated for July 1 of '22 as well, which is fiscal year '23. So that entire change is due to those salary costs, and it is apportioned to the county. So if Shannon was paid 50% by the county, the county would be apportioning 50% of her salary and grease from the merit or.
Any questions, councilor? You good?
There it is. You can see it on the next page. So you can see the fringe did go up a little bit because we calculate that as part of the COLA increase. Travel did not go up. Office operations costs did not go up.
During the pandemic, was there much travel at all?
There was not as much as most years. It was not as much as most years.
Well, we still did a number of farm visits, but most of it was local travel, not campus or anything like that.
And in 4H world, some of it may have been a number of us as educators getting together in a location and then teaching virtually, and there was still, still a different kind of travel.
Did that solve it? So did the tech cost work at all? Was any cost?
The university has a Zoom subscription, so things of that nature didn't. But there certainly were some tech costs, cameras, you know, not every educator had a camera when things started. Exactly. So there were some incidental things like that. Being on Zoom all day long, a lot of days too, there were laptop computers that gave out. Mine did that, you know, things like that.
Yeah. We're not seeing any net number reflected anywhere in here, right?
No, no. That was a cost that either the university or salary savings or travel savings potentially, or a grant, or we were able to cover. So those are not in there.
Anyone fill the BDK space?
Yes, there is, it's the.
Is that the mental?
Yes. There's Teddy Bear Fresh is there, and then there's a mental health team that's there.
I think we're at capacity.
Yes, yes. The whole suites are rented, yes. And this rent has been the same since we moved in to that facility.
Any questions?
Okay, anybody else? And I appreciate the dinner a couple weeks ago. That was great.
Yes.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, you did a great job. Okay. Thank you. Oh, one thing I would love to draw your attention to, if you go to your very last page on the PowerPoint, you can see some of the return that the county gets from our volunteer hours, from master gardeners and 4H volunteers, the savings to residents that some of our nutrient management planning affords. And so just a few things that I listed, and there's almost $290,000 tangible return on the investment.
That's great. Good work.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Good to see you all.
Yep, nice seeing you.
In real life.
Yeah.
Thank you for all you do for it.
Hello.
What's up, guys? How you guys doing?
Yeah.
How you doing, Al?
How you doing? Not too bad. So I guess I'll give you a very, very quick update about the Avalon. We are very happy to be celebrating the 100th year of the Avalon Theater. Yeah, I think that you guys will be hearing more about that throughout the year, and we may be asking, in fact, I bet Holly Townsend has already hit you for this one.
If you might have stopped texting, I texted you probably weekly till good.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah. Very good. Yeah, we are, you know, it's a year-long celebration of the historic theater, and so that's going on. We are very happy also to be back inside the theater with our full production. Thursday night will be the first performance in the Stoltz Listening Room in two years. So we're reopening in that area, and again, hope to be continuing towards more and more normal. We have seen a really stark change in the audience behavior from this fall, where we had performances and they were poorly attended for the sort of brand value of it. And now we are seeing full houses again. So that's all good news. Yeah, I won't give you the long story of the Avalon. We certainly have a lot of other stuff that we're working on, but those are the two big highlights for us that I would tell you about before we jump into MCTV, which has never been busier. Yeah. Yeah, I think that a lot of people discovered our services through the pandemic time period and then learned to really like them. So.
It's not like us.
What's that? So, yeah, our budget request, the operating is the same. Maybe we haven't increased it. It's a steady request. Yeah, as you guys have seen over the many years, yeah, running a television station is a technology-intensive business. And, yeah, that means both that you have to have widgets, and sometimes those widgets become either broken or are no longer supported. Yeah, we had a sort of last minute, actually, after we filed change this year, that is a really mission-critical one that I want to highlight in this long list of technology. We believed that we could expand our existing multi-terabyte stack that, you know, they all, hard drives talk to each other thing, and had a request just for another piece of storage to plug into it when we discovered that the whole machine was no longer going to be supported anymore and that it was also not expandable anymore beyond what we had already. We couldn't just put a bigger hard drive in, which is kind of how we've been managing it in the past. So, yeah, that became immediately our top priority, is we really have to do something about that or we don't have good places to keep the data before we back it up anywhere or anything. And again, it's, television uses a lot of data. Yeah, so, yeah, if you, Nick can talk to the specifics if you have questions about what do these things do. But what was our top priorities prior to that are things that, you know, we really do need to replace right away. And then the second tier, you know, now third tier, are things that we are going to have to replace very soon. And, yeah, for example, you know, the cameras that we've used in the studio, which are now our oldest ones, are ones that are coming close to a decade old. And they're, you know, they're past their productive life. They still are, we've been able to nurse them along, and they're still functional, but that's not going to be true for very long. And so the strategy there is to replace them with the same kind of cameras that we use in the theater and, yeah, so that, you know, we have some redundancy built in. We've got, we can hot swap one for the other if something breaks, but also so that we can, in the studio or in our mobile studio, use when we're out in the field. Yeah, those would be the ones that we'd be using instead of the ancient, now Panasonic's. And then there's a whole bunch of other widgets that are associated with that because it all makes. So that is my very, very brief nickel tour of our capital request. You know, there's these sort of big three elements. I'm happy to entertain questions, and I know that you guys are a little bit behind, so I'd be happy enough to get you back up to speed, so.
Do you maintain sort of a schedule for replacements in that third priority?
We do, and truly, yeah, it is very unusual for us to be caught off guard with this one with the data storage. We believed that there was more life left in it, yeah, and that it was expandable. And we came to find out that that was not the case. But yes, we are always trying to make it so that we don't, yeah. For those of you who are around when, yeah, we saw a significant reinvestment in MCTV in conjunction with the renegotiation of the franchise fees many years ago now, we saw a huge influx in one single year, and we're trying to avoid that from ever happening. So we're always trying to do some replacement and, yeah, make it so that it's never, you know, and you'll see, like, it goes up a little, it goes down a little, but we've been pretty steady. We've done a fairly good job of doing it. And even this request is, you know, it's higher than last year, but lower than the year before. And hopefully, that's the way we stay into the future. It's sort of our strategy.
Have all the renovations for the theater itself been ongoing, or what's the status of that?
Well, it's a 100-year-old building, so I can tell you that, you know, we're going to be maintaining that building in an active way forever. There's always something. But yes, the major renovation of the theater that we did, yeah, really was in that 2018, '19 time period. We have completed that plan. Is done, yeah. And again, it puts us in a position where, yeah, from both a technological standpoint, from just a sheer, like, structural standpoint and a functionality standpoint, we believe that we have the theater that we need for quite some while. So, yeah.
Second question, the setup that you had during the pandemic behind the hardware store.
Right.
From East DUC. Will you be running that again going into this?
So our current thinking, yeah, that obviously is something that started as a response to the fact that we couldn't operate indoors for a period of time. And so, yeah, we don't believe that we have any reason to have the Stoltz Pavilion for COVID reasons right now. And, you know, hopefully, that is never a factor again. We are actively working on a plan that would make a permanent use of that same tent structure and would have a significantly higher capacity than what we did when we were socially distancing people and all that. Yeah, we're working primarily at this point, it's going through a process with the Fire Marshal's Office, because, you know, what we're asking for is not a very typical, you know, it doesn't fit easily into the fire code boxes. It's not a permanent structure, but then it's not really a temporary structure, and how do you make it all go? So they've been really helpful in our work with them, but we're not done. And there's economic considerations that we're working through. There's all of it. So, yeah, there may be a permanent use there. Yeah, it's not going to happen this summer is my take on it right now. And we are not getting rid of any of that infrastructure because, you know, God forbid, we do need it again. We'll have it, and eventually, if we decide that neither permanent use and it feels like, you know, we don't have any other temporary uses ahead of us, then the plan would be to sell off the equipment and, yeah, keep on moving.
The changes to your liquor license allowed you to make that profitable for you?
Absolutely. It was a really instrumental thing. And, yeah, and when we apply, we are in the process of getting a new liquor license this year or renewing it, really. You know, and it would apply to that same location, even though our plan is not to have any active use there now in the event that it does become permanent. Yeah, we don't have to go through any, you know, change there. You've solved that problem, yeah, permanently. So that one's off the table. Thank you. All right, very good.
The other note that I'll throw in is overhearing some of the other ones is when you need to communicate with the county, please keep the station's community calendar in mind. If you have any notices or anything, I'd be happy to throw them up there.
Okay. It's really, looking around this room, we work with virtually everybody in this room.
Exactly.
And hope to.
I'm counting you too.
All right.
Thanks a lot, Al. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Hey, ladies, how are you?
We are just fine, thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am Joan Levy. I'm the executive director of Talbot Arts, formerly known as the Talbot County Arts Council. And this is our president for the past two years, Nancy Larson. Nice to meet all of you. Talbot Arts is one of the 24 arts organizations provided for by the Baron of State Arts Council. And I will give you a little brochure, but we are basically here today to talk to you about a slight increase in our budget. To put this in perspective for you, ladies and gentlemen, we have not asked for an increase in the past 10 years. So times have changed, and I want to explain why we're asking for an increase now and what essentially its impact is. When we receive money from Talbot County. When we receive money from Talbot County, Eastern Oxford and St. Michael's and some of the small philanthropic organizations in the area, we specifically earmarked that money for children, programs for children, youth and young adults. And that money goes back into programming at the school level. So we absolutely sponsor the programs that children enjoy and learn from that happen during school hours for the most part. The other piece of the money goes to support scholarships for high school students so they have an opportunity to enjoy and participate in arts enrichment programs over the summer. But the money is very specific for those two purposes. It doesn't get rolled into general funds or anything like that. Under the previous administration, Jerry Early, who was my predecessor, some of you may know Jerry, ran the organization very capably and wonderfully for 20 plus years. I am the benefactor of his, of his good management, our organization is. We had established with the school, something we called a matching funds program. And to be clear about how that worked is this, when the school teachers decided what arts programs they wanted, we provided 50% of the funds for that and the schools provided the other 50%. When I said the schools provide the other 50%, what that means is those funds came from things like bake sales, car washes, activities that parents, teachers and loved ones participated in to help raise funds for the school. Obviously that has not happened for quite a while. And one of the good things I think that has come out of COVID is that it did make us all take a step back and think about how we have been doing things and perhaps do things in a different way. I mean, we had to. And one of the things we realized in the process is that with our matching funds program, what was happening were, was this, schools that had the ability or capability to come up with a 50% match got more arts programming than the schools that weren't able to do that. So what we are proposing and what we want to do moving forward is this, we want to be able to reach as many students in Talbot County as we possibly can. And our approach to doing that is to take a look at the percent, the number of students in each school and designate our funds based on student enrollment. What that means is though, that we will be providing all of the funds, we're not going to be asking them for the match going forward because we know many of those schools just aren't able to do that. So we're asking for your support and the support of others to help us raise the amount of funds that we have in our, our budget line for that, for that specifically for that purpose. So that's where your $3,000 would go. Sir.
You're saying the match was by school, the schools, individual schools had to come up with their own matching funds?
Yes, sir.
Through their PTA or?
Yes, sir.
Wow. It wasn't the Board of Ad who was governing it?
No, sir. And that was a surprise to me. Again, um, but that, that, those funds were not part of the basic, I guess, what would you call the basic budget? Those funds were from sources as I described.
You would think with the amount of money refund our schools, that they could come up with a few thousand dollars. And I think that they ought to be aware, be aware of that.
Ma'am, I'm not in a position, Charles.
It's incredible, we give them $45 million a year and they can't find $3,000?
I was just shocked that it was individuals.
I, I don't know how to answer that question.
Projects where you did, is it during art class or is it after school enrichment?
There are a variety of.
These are primarily programs that are done during the school day.
Yeah.
Primarily done during the school day. Like bring in an assembly, visit, bring in a visiting artist, bringing a performance group. Um, that's where, that's where that comes from.
Oh, okay.
So these are organizations that provide arts enrichment programs specifically for children in schools.
We've had a very successful experience with partnership with the University of Maryland and music coming into the middle school as well as the high school. And Dr. Robert Deluise has worked just, he's done an amazing job. And that's when we saw the success of this program, we said, we really want to be able to expand it and really bring in more children and more students to have this kind of experience.
Did I answer your questions?
Yeah, I love the website, I want to write it down.
Oh, okay, well, thank you. Let me, that is a.
They're very busy, Jerry.
How, how have you given out $2 million in grants in 35 years?
We get the majority of our money constantly in Maryland State Arts Council. And we also get some funds from local philanthropist groups and from you and some of the towns, Oxford, Eastern, St. Michael's. If you'd like to see a budget, I'll be happy to provide that for you.
I would encourage you to have some of your, some of your scholarship presentations in the state, the art academy, and they've been absolutely fantastic.
Yeah, thank you.
Many of, many of the students that were, that received scholarships, I mean personally, from singers to performers and musicians and I think, yeah, Ms. Cherry, that was singer we had for our 911, Sarah Moni, she was one of your recipients. I think she's a Peabody in Baltimore City?
Yes, she is, yes.
She's a Peabody. Um, another young man, he was a fantastic singer, he went up to New York, I'm trying to think of his name right now, it just slipped my mind. So we, you, you all have been able to contribute greatly to some of these young individuals, talented individuals they had and see them start their, their careers and moving forward. So it's always a pleasure to, to be at those, those scholarship presentations.
We hope you do that again.
We haven't been helping.
No, we haven't been.
The other thing we hear from the students, Mr. Pack, is that when they apply for college, it, that's their application is, it's very favorable that they have scholarships from the local arts council. We've been, we've been told that, so very proud, the kids, the children are very proud, the young adults are very proud of it.
This is a modest request. When I was on the Eastern Town Council a number of years back, Bob Willie always said that, that the $3,000 or $5,000, whatever, that, that the town appropriated for the Arts Council was the best move of the, the town of East never spent and I, I don't feel any differently from this seat, so thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you for all your work.
And look at this whole color. Jerry Early never would have done that.
We got a grant for that, it didn't cost us anything. Please. Believe me, I heard from him about it.
Proud of your friend.
He has been a wonderful mentor and we're in touch very regularly, so we'll give him your best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Want to check that cup?
Huh? You want to smell it?
Yeah, you want to check it.
It's clear.
I was going to say it might be mixed with Coke or something, but no, it's a, it's
strong water.
How you doing?
Good.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah. You ask me how long I've been here, it's, it's part of the tradition now and it's, I started May 26th, so it's coming up on a year.
It's settled in now?
Yes. Yeah, no, it's, it's a lot of fun. That's been my takeaway is it's been fun. At first maybe it started a little differently, but now it's, it's fun now.
That's good.
Yeah, dealing with employees, that's always fun.
Yeah.
It's never a dull moment.
Yeah.
So, so I appreciate the, the opportunity. I don't know if Administrative Services has come in over the years for this, but I really wanted that opportunity. Um, I've got just a couple of supplemental operating requests in my budget. The first one is account 5074 tuition reimbursement. And that's, I'm requesting to add $4,000 there. We budgeted eight and Cindy in, in my office really is the process owner of this. And so, so the data for this, for this, this fiscal year is we're going to spend the 8,000 and we're going to reject approximately about 2,000 due to the cap. So this is first come, first served throughout the year. And Clay and the County Manager's Office, we were talking about this and so we kind of built that in and you know, want to provide that opportunity for maybe another person to participate in this. So the, the benchmark is 2,500 for a master's degree and 1,500 for a bachelor's, that's the cap we have in this program. So if someone's doing a fall and spring, you know.
Per year.
Per year, per year. And so sometimes they may get a fall in and then the spring, you know, not be able to finish that up or whatever. So I, you know, I, I would almost like, because if you look at the history, we've, we've kind of, you know, it's been incremental and slow and steady wins the race in my mind. And I think, I'm hoping that you feel this is along those lines to keep it, keep it. Quite honestly, it's so variable. You go from year to year, you know, you could have people that are joining the organizations that are pursuing and then the next year you might not have it, have that kind of volume. So that, the purpose there is recruitment and retention is a big piece of it. In theory, we, we communicate this, we could hire someone that is interested in our program. And then for existing employees, we connect it to their roles and it can improve their competency level. The next one is account 5113 advertising. This is a couple of recruiting items. I, I have gotten some requests from directors to bring into the fold LinkedIn as far as a, a process for us to post positions through LinkedIn. We do not do that currently and it's, it's, my request is 70, 7,000 for LinkedIn and it's just for, my, my calculation was really small and this would be for more senior professional level positions that we have, which is more, you know, the types of positions that would gravitate towards this. So it's 119 per month per job and I said maybe five jobs per month would be on LinkedIn annualized and came up with that amount. It could go lower, you know, it depends on the open.
Positions a month?
On, on average, we're advertising 10 a month.
So many counties.
Yeah, yeah, and.
People in the department.
And truthfully, you know, we have, might have a month where it's more Rhodes positions versus professionals. So this, this won't be consistent each month this way, but I, we, again, I have had direct requests that have come through my office and then gone to the County Manager, can we consider this? And then Indeed was the other piece of this, another $7,000 for Indeed. Right now we post positions on Indeed and it's free, of course, but what happens is as soon as we post it, all the other positions that are posted, we, we fall from day one. It's, so you're, you're near the top and the data shows that when people are looking for positions, they kind of, they do it by search, whatever, within their category, whatever's at the top, they'll go down three or four or five positions, they need a rest. They don't have enough time on the weekend, they're done.
So you think you need to revert and try the LinkedIn and see if that gets you what you need because it's like everybody's on that and you find the need to be sponsored, so to speak.
Yeah, the sponsor it is to keep your name at the top. That's the sponsor piece. We're not doing that now and it's a good point. We have the LinkedIn, most, I think the percentage, I, I'll be careful with it, I believe it's 65%, 70% of people, professionals that look for jobs go onto LinkedIn. It's really gravitated more that way and I think it's been the cost concern for us historically, if we wanted to put everything out there, right? And you wouldn't put certain level of positions. So it's kind of, my idea was put our foot, our toes in and see how we do. And that, that was kind of what I thought about there.
Because, yeah, I'm just saying, definitely not a bad idea. And just three years ago, we were trying to fill the Director of Corrections Division to the members and Caroline County had about 20 or so applications and we were having nothing. What were we using back then? Let me remember.
Well, we, if, when we have a position like that, we'll go to the State Association website, we're posted on Mago. Indeed was new for us under the previous HR Director.
Their jail's on the water.
I mean.
They, they were, they were in the hot, the same time that we were in the hot and I can't remember what we were using, but I remembered that we were not getting nearly nowhere close to what they were getting as far as applicants. And I think that we decided, I was just advertising LinkedIn at that time because we just were not getting any bites on what we were using. I can't remember what we were using back then. So it's probably why I was to kind of look at what's trending out there as far as these positions.
Yeah, and I think with LinkedIn, if you do the one-off, they really hit you for, you know, if you're just going to throw a job out there once a year, but, but still it's a, it's one time. You know, the cost structure goes up for that. If you do a few more with them, I came from environments where we, geez, we had 280 jobs on the board at a time, it was LinkedIn and we actually purchased what's called a seat where just like their recruiters, we could go out into the LinkedIn databases and search for our own positions, but that's if you have really big recruiting shops. So, so yeah, I, I think that could be an approach. The, the last one I had was account 5130 professional services. This request is for 51,829. It's for the ADP Human Resource Information System. I've already submitted this funding proposal through the American Rescue Plan Act, ORPA. Joy particularly had suggested that I also submit this request through the budget process as well in case there was not approval for it. And so I actually submitted the ORPA request through the budget. And I believe the County Manager's Office is fully supported in this request. And so I, I think you have a copy of this justification. It's, it's really, I asked around about when we went with ADP payroll a couple of years ago in 2017, we did not purchase, this is the sister purchase of that, probably from a cost perspective, you know, if you put them together, it's 100 grand at the time. And, but, you, you know, I, I just believe that digitization efforts are so important for us in HR, we do everything manually. When we're doing a retroactive payment for a COLA, it was a three and a half, four day process. And you know, you have bits and pieces of the software that do it, you type in with the three and a half and it calculates it in, you know, very little time. And so I listed all of the things within HR that are part of the solution. And it's everything from hiring components to compliance to simple things like sending back letters to people that have applied for positions. That's such a wonderful thing to do from a, you know, how you're viewed in the community. You know, instead of typing, you know, or word processing those and sending them out individually, saying, we have your resume, thank you, we'll be in touch with you soon, those types of things. And then the big piece is benefits administration. Yeah, we do spreadsheets and all of that, but they're, as part of this, they're called modules where you house all your information for benefits and then for employee reasons and budgeting reasons, it's just more efficient. And actually in the benchmarking work that we're doing, there's, there's components within the system where we can be doing more of our internal benchmarking in the future, where we get data and we house it in there and we have it and we can then go out and say, oh, that's right, this position is at this. So a lot of things, I look at it more as analytics, which H, human resources function over the years has become much more of a data driven function. In the old days, it was whatever it was, now it's really around that, providing data for, for your group as well when you have questions about things.
Clay is very supportive of this HRIS model, you know, the benefit of hiring people like Joy and David and Ken, coming from the industry coming in and saying, wow, you guys, you know, are so, people having to do work theirself. wow, you guys, you know, are so, people having to do work, there's a much easier way that that we can leverage resources here and really get the information that's needed and get, you know, the retroactive pay that the boys are so grateful for, the employees will never realize the amount of work that went into getting that done. So they are really grateful to the council for getting that to pass, but it was incredibly big and heavy to, in that way.
One of the coolest things is it talks about the employee lifecycle. By employee, you can house everything about them in a file. So Joe Smith, you type in, oh, there pops up a discipline that, you can go to a file, but you, you know, it's a way to just right there be talking with someone real time and, oh, manager may come and say, I want to do a promotion for this person. Hold on a second, wait a minute, there's some stuff, you know, whatever. Because we dig right now, we go to a file, we dig and some of them are, you know, and if we catch a paperclip erroneously, we might miss it. So that's all I have.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right. Okay. All right. Very good, good.
All of here, if you'll like, we can go into closed session.
Okay. For move, for the follow-up reasons?
Yeah.
Okay. Or this is to discuss, to consider the acquisition of real property for public purpose in matters directly related to the acquisitions, to consult with counsel, to obtain legal advice, to consult with staff consultants and other individuals about pending or potential legislation, litigation, rather.
Second, second. Third?
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. All right.